Get ready.
We'll do the pre-cameras. And we got a mall on the other side of there.
Six months later, they're trying to do a...
Get ready.
Good evening. Welcome to the July Work Session for the City of Hiram. And we have Post Two Commissioner Sandy Cager here with us this evening for Paulding County. And to start, Paulding County Voting District, Deidre Holden is with us tonight. Hi, Deidre. Cliff?
Do your thing. Let's pray. Father, now as always, we come to say thank you and we bless you. We thank you, God, that you are totally, completely in control and we surrender our will over to you. Father, I pray now for these elected and appointed officials, Father, that your will be done. They would submit to you, God, to what you have for them to do. And I pray, God, that you grant me the ability to be the ear, the voice, in their ear, God, speaking your word, your wisdom, and your knowledge. Bless us today, keep us, and watch over us. In Jesus' name I pray, with faith believing. Amen.
Amen.
Let us all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Cliff.
Yes, sir.
We have a couple of announcements to make about Councilmember Melissa Byardell. She was just sworn in for the third Vice President for the Georgia Municipal Association, District One. Councilmember Byardell has been elected the third Vice President of the Georgia Municipal Association, District One, for the 25-26 term. Councilmember Byardell was officially sworn in during the GMA's annual convention held in Savannah on June 20th, 24th. As District One Third Vice President, Councilmember Byardell, along with the district officers, will serve as a liaison between GMA and local municipal officials in their district. Responsibilities include assisting with the implementation of GMA policies, advocating on behalf of cities, and supporting efforts to strengthen local government governance through training and networking. District One encompasses northwest corner of Georgia and includes the cities in the following counties: Bartow, Katusa, Katuga, Dade, Fannin, Floyd, Gilmer, Gordon, Harrelson, Murray, Paulding, Pickens, Polk, Walker, and Whitfield. So, a little territory to cover.
Did you know that?
And then she also... Councilmember Byardell received the Harold F. Holtz Training Institute Certificate of Achievement during the Georgia Municipal Association's annual convention in Savannah on Monday, June 23rd. To receive a certificate of achievement, the requirement is at least 120 hours of training, including at least 54 hours from the required list of the newly-elected official's institute. "This is a remarkable achievement," said GMA CEO and Executive Director Larry Hanson. "The investment that Councilmember Byardell has taken through her commitment to professional development sets the standard for innovation and service of local government across our state." Councilmember Byardell's achievements not only benefit the City of Hiram but also strengthen her effectiveness as a city official. Congratulations, Melissa.
Thank you.
Come on, Derek.
That's Melissa.
You've reached just dead.
Ready? One, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you.
Mr. Hofstadter, your report, sir. Public Works Quarterly Projects Report.
Okay, good. Got it on the screen. This one's gonna be a little bit shorter, because there's been a lot of updates since I've made this presentation for this meeting. And then I sent out some emails last week with some updates, and there's even been some updates to that since then. So, I'll just try to go over what's new on here. This is just a breakdown of the work orders where the... Most of the guys are spending their time with the work order system. You can tell for Public Works, the streets, parks, and facilities are the three biggest ones: canned deliveries and meter reeds for utility billing. And I'm probably gonna reduce down the categories for work orders soon based on our crews and what their jobs are, so that work orders go to specific people when they come in. But that's the three main areas that work orders are coming in for. And there's a whole lot since I've done this, because we changed our system. Probably close to 200 submitted over the last month. So, there's a lot of changes with the work order system. Next page. Okay, Homer Leggett Park. We are on... We've done some of Program Plan Five on there. We've installed bike racks and repair station and some signage and have done some of those things, but starting tomorrow, we should be able to start Plan Three, and hopefully by this time next week, it hopefully is done. All except for little things that Public Works will do over time during maintenance, and then the park should be open and done, other than just like, again, cosmetic things. But, so, it's almost done. It's right at the ending point. Next page. I did want to show like, these pictures, kind of before and after, of one area that wasn't on the original plan. We added this later when we saw the runoff and how mushy that grass always is, and hoping to have really good concession program there in the future. So, this accommodates some more space and some bike amenities. Go to the next page, please. And this is basically what we've drawn out and what we're doing out there. There's a bike repair station, bike pump, some bike racks, picnic tables, bench. We're gonna add some trees and things like that to sweeten it up. And on that ledge, on the upper area, we're adding a handrail, but it's probably a week or two out still that's going in there. And then maybe some patio tables eventually when we have a concession person. So, this was an add-on to the original plan, but it's coming along. Just a few pictures. We got a fountain installed. Pavilion Three is built, but not complete yet, but it's totally built. Dog park fencing, some of the drainage for the dog park, you see all that, the dirt, that was where everything flooded. And we added a French drain system that wraps around the building, and it's working really good. And then, right-of-way clearing, they've been busy with that. Thanks to you, that's your street. Okay, next slide. So, this is Pavilion Three. That's kind of what it's been... The picture on the left is what it's looked like, I guess, for several years now during construction, Pavilion going up. Next slide. And this is what it looks like today, except for some stuff that we've done around it with mulching. And we're waiting on the railing on the sod to get redone, to pass inspection, and it needs seal coated. All that's supposed to be done this week, and then we can add picnic tables and we can start getting everything in there and it'll be open and ready to go. And we are working on plans for the playground fencing, which involves removal of the fence that we've talked about, and more landscaping. So, all that will kind of be part of this with the restroom renovations. I'm just gonna get on this list real quick and see what's new. We have the retaining wall for the basketball court. That's being rebuilt and sinkholes dug out. All that's gonna take place next week. So, the basketball court will be closed for a few days as that happens. We're getting quotes for surfacing of playgrounds. Tennis court lighting is actually completed. We just... They tore up the fence. I don't know if you've noticed the fence torn down on the tennis courts, but we're waiting on them to repair that for us and to add timers to the lights. And the wildlife study that we've talked... That's still going on through October. Greys Mill Park, nothing new there as far as updates on my end. We did get the fountain working on Beatty Street. It just... It's leaking, so now we have to look at some other options, but at least the fountain part right now is working, and we have it on a system so that we're not using up too much water. Like, we installed something so that if it drops, it'll add some water, so it's not just constantly feeding water. So, we're not wasting too much right now, but we are working on a solution to get that fixed. And I'm also looking at some options for the pond of Marsha Harris Park. If I can... I'm just not confident right now in how deep that water is year-round, so I'm gonna keep testing it. But we are looking at a fountain or irrigation system or something for that pond. We removed a lot of trees, and you can see it really good from the street now as you drive by. And I think a fountain out there would be nice if we can get it. Next slide. The street projects, Cliff's gonna talk about a lot of those actually tonight. We do have our... One of our crews working on mapping all of the street signs throughout the downtown area, so we have the number of stop signs, things like that, that we need, so that we can replace them and make them look nicer. Some of them got some age on them, but it's just something that we're working on that we might bring back later. The pole barn at Public Works is completed. We're just waiting on equipment. We're getting electrical and lights installed, and we may look at a gutter system on there as well. But the electrical and everything starts tomorrow. But other than having equipment to wash the trucks with at the moment, it is done. Everything's installed. So, I went through that kind of quick. Is there any questions about anything?
I wanted to say, sorry, the work that has been done at Homer Leggett is phenomenal. I don't think I've ever been so excited to walk into a public bathroom before. It looks great.
Yes.
I did want to ask, is it a part of the plan to kind of even out the areas where the dogs run?
You mean making it not on slope?
Yeah.
As much? Not really. It really hasn't been looked at yet, except for areas where gates are, so that they can open and close. But, once the equipment is installed... I did say the equipment's being installed. That process starts tomorrow. I did mention that? Okay. Yeah, so they're bringing the equipment. Thursday installation starts. Hopefully, it'll be done by Monday. We'll see what it's like. The hill on that one side's probably can't do anything with that. On the lower ends, by the gates, possibly.
Okay.
But I haven't really looked into leveling it too much yet. We even purposely, on the small dog park, tried to slope it. It didn't work out that great, but we tried our best so water could run off instead of collecting.
It looks great. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Ms. Joyman, did you want to speak on something?
Good evening, Mayor Moran. Moran, council members, and city staff. My name is Minyon Jordan, and I am a licensed clinical social worker and the co-owner of Olive Tree Therapy and Wellness located right here in Hiram, Georgia, located off of 107 Enterprise Path. I serve specifically adults, seniors, veterans, and children, specifically who have had traumatic experiences, deal with stress, depression, and other challenges. I'm here tonight respectfully to request a revision to Article 12 Massage Spa Establishment, specifically Section 12, 416, exemptions A and E, to explicitly include licensed mental health professionals under the list of exempted providers. Currently, the ordinance allows exemptions for medical providers such as chiropractors, physical therapists, acupuncturists, even people who do hair, right? Cosmetologists. They're all regulated by state boards, which are under healthcare standards and are not included... So, mental health professionals are also under the same regulated board. And basically, the biggest issue is, we look at trauma and the fact that it is stored in the body. And there's new research, and there's actually a breadth of research under our licensed provisions that have us work with body-based services. However, we're not massage therapists, but we want to hire them. And so, I have a license... Actually, can I give you all my handouts to give you to what I'm speaking to? So, as I was sharing, we have... What you're receiving here is the copies of my licensure, as well as the licensed massage therapist that I would love to be under my supervision. What I'm doing is, I'm training massage therapists to do trauma-informed work. A lot of people do talk therapy, but they're resistant to treatment because just talking about the trauma isn't releasing it, because, again, it gets stuck in our bodies. And so, by training massage therapists to do the trauma-informed work, which is my clinical expertise, I'm able to give them a safe environment. Unfortunately, under the spa ordinance, there's a lot of prohibitive rules that makes it uncomfortable and unsafe for my veterans, for people who have been in domestic violence situations, such as, we can't keep our doors locked. We are a healthcare facility, and if we're here alone, if we don't have our receptions up front, we need to lock our doors. I'm a woman, I'm a single woman, and if I have someone who has been traumatized, most of the guys, they can't even sit with their back to the door. You think they're gonna come see me if my doors have to be unlocked? If they're in the back of my building, there's six offices. So, that's one of the parts of the ordinance that's uncomfortable for me. Another part of the spa ordinance that's restrictive for my business is that...
Mr. Mayor, that is three minutes. In order for her to continue, you'd need to have a motion to allow additional time, a second, and a vote.
I'll make a motion to extend the time.
Oh, second.
Thank you. Thank you for the extension.
And is there a designation on the amount of time?
Three more minutes.
Thank you.
The other...
We have to take a vote.
We have to take a vote.
All opposed? Three more minutes.
Thank you. Another issue is number 13. No minor shall only be allowed inside the establishment without his or her parent. A lot of the kids I work with at Hiram High School, they drive themselves. So, again, I'm a therapist. Our primary work is therapy. I want to do an integrated model where I have massage therapists, acupuncturists, and even chiropractors that focus solely on trauma-based services and mental health. That's the vision that I have. And unfortunately, the spa ordinance has a lot of restrictions that's prohibiting me to move forward with that particular... With that particular goal. So, my request is that you all make an amendment to add mental health professionals to the exemption list. Again, we are under a House bill that promotes healthcare professionals to have massage... To use massage in the healthcare sphere. And we also have like, an EHR where we monitor them, just like any of our other medical records. This is a medical facility, and we want it to be treated that way. Thank you.
I have a question. So, the massage therapist, is that person licensed?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I'm not... It's not in my scope of work to touch the people, but it is in my scope of work to train the individuals to use trauma-informed work, so people can feel safe. My clients would not feel comfortable going to your local, you know, storefront massage therapy, and they wouldn't understand the protocols that I teach for them to feel safe to do that releasing and feel safe in their body to have that particular therapeutic strategy to go to use. And then, we also do follow-up care, and we have like, team meetings where I meet with the therapist to help them in that space.
I have one short question. Do you do any work with children or adults that are autistic?
That is not my primary focus, because it's trauma. But I have worked with children.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Discuss employee handbook, update some changes, Kathy?
Good evening. Y'all presented last month the copy of the current additions, changes, modifications, copy-pasted portions of the handbook, changed over to the new handbook. I've not received any comments or positives, negatives on any aspects of the handbook. I did get one from our attorney in regards to the witness duty, some correct verbiage to put us in line with state correct. So, we'll get that straightened up in there. Other than that, the only comment I'd received was from Ms. Byardell in regards to what was basically copied and pasted from the previous handbook in regards to exit interviews. So, if that is wish... The wish of the council to be reworded, we would just need to come up with what? Because when you research exit interview policies, there's not a whole lot, because a lot of companies have gotten away from exit interviews. So, there's nothing really, other than what we currently had in our handbook, just to carry over. But if you would like to reword that, we all just need to know what direction you want it to go, so we can get some kind of formalization to that policy.
I... Yeah. So, the request I made is to help us to provide insight. If we are provided with these exit interviews, it gives us an idea of what things that we can do from this leadership position down when it comes to budget hearings. If people are leaving for pay, this is great insight for us. So, what I am requesting, a discussion, but my request is to have the wording... I know it's not required, and I'm glad that you did, Jody, that you implemented this practice. However, I want it to be offered to all employees, and if they decline participating in an exit interview, they should sign off on it.
Okay.
You can't make them sign.
I was gonna say, we can't force them to do anything. My recommendation is that if we wanted to change the policy up, we put it where... If we wanted to have it where it was just an email that went out to all employees or a printed... Every employee, when they leave, they get a separation notice from us, and they also get a benefit notification letter that's typed up by me based personally on that individual. We could put in that packet an exit interview that if they felt comfortable to fill it out, give it back to us. I mean, we have different options of ways we could do it. It's just, of course, timing with an employee leaving. A lot of times, employees don't give us the notice that they're leaving. Then the ones that do give us, the scheduling, they... You know, they may be a night shift officer that doesn't feel comfortable coming in during the day just to do an exit interview, so that would give us an option to reach out to those type of individuals also. But if... Whatever you would like, if you want to just put something in writing, and then that way I can take it and, you know, go a different direction with it as far as getting into a formal type to put in the policy.
I want to say thank you, because I know this took a lot of time.
Yeah, it's actually started, like I said, back in 2020. So, it's been five years in process, progress. So, a lot of this stuff, like I said, in there, when I gave it to you, it referenced the changes that were made, if it did have a budgetary item, it affected or not. Most of it, I tried to stay from affecting the budgetary items, or I put in there, based on budgetary necessities, it could be changed at any time with the approval of the city manager and council, so.
Thanks, Kathy. Can you discuss the proposed changes to supplemental insurance coverage for employees?
As discussed, you know, we currently have been with Lincoln for our short-term, long-term disability and life insurance, currently with the employees getting a $30,000 life insurance policy. I have talked to Colonial, and they're willing to take on our life, long-term, short-term, and our life insurance policies that are paid by the city, providing every employee, instead of a $30,000 policy, a $50,000 policy. But it also makes that policy, whether they have the city-paid portion or they take out additional life insurance, it has that portability act where they can continue those premiums themselves after retirement, or if they have to leave, or anything like that. The short-term disability, I still say we continue with it, but replace the long-term disability under Colonial with the accident policy that they're providing us. It is a more cost-effective thing for us as far as giving employees a benefit that's immediate response for them now, not long-term, but the cost-effective as far as the city-paid benefit, it's cheaper across the board for a cost savings for short-term disability, replacing the long-term, and the life insurance for the employee and the city is cheaper than what we've been currently paying, along with the other things they're throwing in for the hearing and the other stuff. So, that's my recommendation, that we be allowed to change it over. It would not be effective till open enrollment, which effective date would be January 1st, 2026.
Any questions? Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Before you go into new business, I believe there's one more citizen wishing to speak that was on the list.
Yes, sir, that's Mr. Morris, and that is the new business number six.
Yes, he's here to speak, though, as a citizen wishing to speak on that agenda item, so he should have three minutes.
Garnet? You're on.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Garnet Morris, one of the board members of Seaboard Township. I have been advocating for about a part of a year for many of the deficiencies at the builder, the Phase Two section of Seaboard Township, to remedy some of those deficiencies. The paving of the street is one of the deficiencies that the developer kind of screwed us on, for better word. And it is my hope that the council will vote in support of finishing the job that the builder did not. I understand from the county that they have turned over a performance bond that was given to them by the builder to the city. I understand that the cost of the paving of the roadway is deficient in the neighborhood of 10 or so thousand dollars, minus that bond, and it is my hope that the council will see it fit to help the residents of Seaboard Township, the residents of Hiram, in finishing the street. It's something that we've lived with for the better part of five years, and I think it's time that it gets resolved. That's it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Moving right along with that same topic, Cliff?
Thank you, Mr. Morris, for being open to that for this item? Yes. I've sent all of the mayor-elect and official council an email that I received from Mr. George Jones... Excuse me. From Paulding County with a statement from Mr. George Jones in agreement with Ann Lippman. So, you have what I've written as a purpose and a background on this, and Mr. Morris has already touched on it. But we... I got two bids to the point of the matter. To the point of the matter, I got two bids for this work, and we select HNC. We got two bids, one from HNC and one from... And we select HNC. Uh, we got two bids, one from HNC and one from J-1 Power. J-1 Power, uh, it was among the staff that we decided to go with HNC, which is a known quantity, which is a little bit more, approximately twenty thousand more because J-1 Power was not going to charge us for the curbing. And we could not understand why. I've called them. We've had some other staff call them. Uh, we could not understand why. We've, uh, checked the ratings, we've checked, uh, Google, uh, and we just couldn't find out how they can, anybody, any business can afford to give away twenty thousand dollars. So that's why we chose, uh, HNC, uh, for this work. At a cost of eighty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. That's, uh, replacing the topping and replacing all the missing curb and broken gutter down in, uh, Seaboard Township Phase Two.
Okay, and the bond that we received from the county was what, seventy-two thousand?
Seventy-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars.
So basically nine to ten thousand more we, the city would have to put in.
Approximately, yes, from the seventy, seventy-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-five to the eighty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy. And that's just the numbers to numbers, not counting what we add on for the, uh, contingency.
And the rest of that will be coming out of Public Works with the maintenance?
Public Works, M and O Maintenance, because that's where the bond check went.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions? I do. Cliff, in that letter, email that you sent, they listed, I think it was in twenty twenty-three, there were thirteen deficiencies?
Uh, yes, sir.
Do you have a list of what those deficiencies were?
Mr. Tressel's referencing an email that I received, um, dated February second, twenty twenty-two, where an inspection was done. I can hand this to you after I reference it.
That's fine. I, I, I just would like to see what the rest of the deficiencies were.
I can read them all.
Okay.
Okay, uh, replace, remove and replace four-foot sidewalks with five-foot sidewalks per plan. Install topping with one-inch, five-point-five millimeters. Super pave with lime. Remove and replace deficiencies in binder, curb and sidewalks. Call Paulding County DOT to schedule a meeting for areas to be marked. Clean out all debris inside storm structures and under catch basins. Ensure pipes are grouted and inverts poured in all storm structures. Six, I'm reading one at a time. Six, install handicap ramp intersection of trailside weight and trailside and trailside view per lane, per plot, excuse me. Downspout pop-out drains should be removed at lot seventy-four, eighty-six and sixty-six will need to be placed out of right-of-way at least thirteen feet from back of curb. Storm pipe at back of lot seventy-four not shown on plot. Call Paulding County DOT to discuss. It is, it is left-in. It will need a ten-inch private drain easement shown on plaque. Number nine, remove concrete and gutter and parking pad at sales center. Number ten, signs need to be upgraded to new specs. Call Paulding County DOT and speak to Keith Puckett in Traffic Operations for information. Eleven, remove all silt fencing where grass is established. Twelve, developer must call Paulding County DOT for an appointment to go over the list. Thirteen, the catch basins needed on plans for Seaboard Township Phase Two are shown as catch basins, but some are installed as grate pipes. We, we would not, we would need that shown on the plans with approval from Paulding County DOT. This was sent, uh, February eighth, twenty twenty-two. That's when it was the second time inspected. These deficiencies were found. The first time it was inspected, January twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, and these deficiencies were still there.
And when was the project signed off on by Paulding County?
Uh, Paulding County, November of almost twenty twenty-three. And when I, when you say signed off, this, what I hope you mean, this is when Paulding County accepted the check from Rockland Homes only after Rockland Homes went to one of the houses that was flooding at that time during a rainstorm. They saw the water coming in the house. The representative from Rockland Homes went to Paulding County, offered Paulding County the check, the seventy-two thousand, and Paulding County accepted that check.
So it is always the time, right time to help our citizens. It's always that time and I understand, but I'm, I'm with you. Who is responsible? I understand we have an intergovernmental agreement. However, I say we do what's right for our citizens, but I think we need some time to explore what our options are, what legal recourse can be. I hope we don't have to go that route, but if these are those deficiencies that were known and moved forward and accepted.
This inspection was completed by Mr. Mike Keener, Paulding County DOT Construction Inspector. That's who, that's who made the inspection and the email was sent to me from Mr. Mike Jones, Paulding County.
So, and this doesn't address the flooding because I remember standing out there, we had some, we had some of the homeowners, first-time homeowners, some of them were, and it was heartbreaking to hear their stories that they couldn't utilize their backyards. Flooding occurred to their first level of their home, brand-new homes, because of inadequate service of delivery. I understand it's only a ten thousand, but with the contingencies, eighteen thousand, three hundred and twelve. I say we, you know, I always, citizens come first and that's why we're here. However, I do feel we need to explore what needs to be done in order to hold those who are accountable for the deficiencies that our citizens have experienced for so many years.
We've been working on that. We have made contact with the Secretary of State's Office. Cliff has sent an email to the homeowners down there to write to a specific individual at the Secretary of State's Office if he would take action or try to, for actually against the builders and only two people had sent any correspondence to the guy from Secretary of State's Office. That flooding issue is a separate from what we're talking about here with the, the street.
Right, I took a drive down.
But we've been talking, we've also been talking with the county about them ponying up to, to make up the discrepancy and we have not had a whole lot of luck with it.
So in situations like this, attorney, what do we do? What type of legal recourse? Because not this one, this particular project would cost us eighteen thousand, three hundred and twelve without the, with the contingency. If not, it's ten thousand. I understand a dollar amount doesn't equate the, the quality of life for our citizens. We need, what needs to be done needs to be done, but I think we need some time to explore, revisit, have a table and see what legal recourse, if that's the, if we need to take that route, if we are not responsible for this damage because this is just one to mitigate. However, they also have the flooding issue, which is not even involved in this, which is, would cost us over a hundred thousand dollars. So would we assume responsibility as well for deficient services that were delivered to these citizens?
If that's a, if that's a question, you were looking at me, if that's a question for me?
I don't know. Whoever has the answer, I'll, I'll take that answer from whoever's got it.
I believe that will be determined.
That would go to our attorney?
As you're well aware, I represent both Paulding County and the city of Hiram. So pursuant to the rules of the state bar of Georgia, I have a conflict of interest and I can't weigh in on behalf of either of those entities. I will say that there is a court of appeals case out there that, where one city went against a county seeking, um, the providing of money in regard to a service delivery strategy that they, that the city felt was deficient. The Superior Court found in favor of the city against the county. However, when it went up on appeal, the Court of Appeals of Georgia said that service delivery strategy, strategies don't provide a monetary avenue for one government to recover against another government because of immunities. So state law immunities will certainly have a play in any litigation that comes about, but given my conflict of interest, I can't weigh in on either side.
Thank you.
In reference, in reference to those strategic agreements, I sent, I included the agreement that was used to justify the county accepting that check on our behalf. You saw the date on it, you saw who signed it. So that, that's why, and that's what they're standing on, the strategic agreement.
Our citizens shouldn't have to suffer. Um, and they've been suffering for quite some time. I drove by Seaboard today and there were at least eight to nine sewer potholes that are raised significantly. I don't want my car, even though I have a big suburban, but it's, not everybody does. Uh, it's not fair for them to have to live in that. They, not fair that they're flooding. I just want to see some type of resolution that holds the entity accountable and I think we need some time to explore that and maybe table this up to twenty-sixth of August.
Well, I'm going to disagree on tabling it.
Say anything, I'm sorry.
I'm going to disagree with tabling it.
Okay.
The reason being is we're in a position where we can help this, these folks out and get this resolved. If we end up looking at any litigation, the dollar amount that we have to spend, excuse me, over the bond amount, we can seek to recover.
I love that option.
So I think we need to, my feeling is we need to do something for these folks. I've been in there multiple times and I, Garrett, or Garnett, I hate zigzag to get around the sewer lines. It's, it's a mess. So I think we need to have a vote on it next Tuesday to see about correcting the problem for the citizens.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Cliff.
Yes, sir.
Discuss purchases of the Ventrac tractor for Public Works. Michael?
When I, when I did the presentation for Ben Hill Strickland Park, the, uh, handle the whole phase-one of things that we can do to, to kind of raise, raise the standard there, uh, some of those slides were, uh, talking about a Ventrac tractor and some attachments. Um, because when, as we were looking at what we can do to, you know, to do all the work that we say that we're going to do and then also not, I'd say destroy the turf and make it look like heavy tractors have been through there and, and destroying everything, the Ventrac was the best option. So this, this is a request to purchase a Ventrac. Uh, I think it's six attachments. All things that are needed, uh, at Ben Hill and other parks, but also when we had the demo of the equipment, when they came out, they showed us how we could maintain all of the stormwater detention ponds and right-aways and it made a lot more sense because of how easy it was to use and less impact expense on tires and equipment and everything else that we would destroy out there with skid steers, uh, that we can have some attachments for that as well. So this is the, the request for the Ventrac and six attachments that will be used in the parks and in right-aways and in mowing, um, in addition to the equipment that we already have.
Did this, uh, piece of equipment save you a man-hours on doing those tasks?
So we did, uh, the, the detention pond during the, uh, the demo, we had a work order in that was probably going to take four people an entire day with weed eaters, clippers, chainsaws, uh, trucks hauling things away. In ten minutes, this is trees growing and everything, the entire detention pond was done in ten minutes. And that included driving over the water that was in the bottom. So, and then so, yes, it's going to save a lot of time. We cut a nature trail in Ben Hill Park.
Yes.
Yeah, we cut a, we cut a nature trail just for fun. Um, probably five minutes. The plan is to have a nature trail there, so this will be like the first leg of it, but we, we already went through and, and did it just so that everybody could have their time on the machine and practice and get comfortable with it.
How long will it take to get the attachments in?
I don't know specifically. Uh, oh yeah, I guess the other thing I forgot, this is, um, purchasing through Sourcewell and the local vendor is Howard Brothers. Um, so they're just right up the street and they have the guys there that sell this that can come out and do, they'll do all the trainings and show everybody everything they know, all the ins and outs, the maintenance of the equipment and everything they need to do. Some things they have in stock, um, some things they don't. So I'm not sure which ones or how long exactly it'll take.
And where are you planning on storing it all?
We're making, you know, we're making room at, in the Public Works building and plus with the pole barn that we can move, we have plenty of room now to move things around. And we still have some equipment at the rural town building at Gray's Mill right now as well and there's some space in there. So we'll figure out how to maneuver it. Um, the pole barn, one bay of it will probably house most of this equipment.
Does the distributor also do maintenance?
They do. They do. And it'll be under warranty of, for quite a while too, until we reach that point, but yeah, they do maintenance.
Any questions? Yeah, I got one. Are there any additional attachments you have on your wish list?
They have, uh, forty-seven attachments in total, I think. So, yeah, so I would expect every year probably for a couple of Christmas presents. Everything, we don't have, we don't have to worry about the snow removal so much, but all the leaf, leaf fall management, the forestry attachments, the street, uh, we don't really have baseball fields and football fields and things right now, but the equipment to mow that, golf courses, they got all kinds of stuff that we can do. Gray's Mill, uh, at some point I can see specialty mowing attachments for up there, depending on what we do, but at least some of the park.
Thank you, Michael. Discuss the bid, Brad Ward for Harris Drive, Cliff?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Um, purpose, we're here to discuss the, um, the bid submitted by S.H. Creo. We received, we only received one qualifying bid. One of the bids was received after the deadline, so it was never opened. So we actually received two, but only one of them qualified and this is one for S.H. Creo. Again, check all the, uh, background on them. Some of the schools, some of the work that they've done, all references came back stellar. The background, this project will improve the streetscape of Harris Drive by widening the street up to the memorial, adding sidewalk on the side of the moor, streetlights and correcting a stormwater issue on the opposite side of the Harris Drive. This, this, uh, project will impact the, and provide, uh, sidewalks, walkability from Main Street down to the memorial. The funding of this project will come from Streets Floss at a cost of two-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars plus the ten percent, uh, contingency for a total of two-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars and fif, two-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars, five-hundred, two-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Questions?
Is there any possible way that we can redo the bids? Because I know one qualifying, one may have qualified, but they missed the deadline. Do you think it would make sense for us to reopen the bids to see if there's a more competitive price or bid? Maybe we could save money?
We, we do the normal, um, four weeks bid time and, um, the, I don't, I don't see a need for it. Me personally, I don't see a need for it.
Okay.
I believe the engineer's estimate was also within range of what was bid, so.
Right.
It was not like a shot-in-the-dark type price. It actually came in within a range of the engineer's, um, estimate.
Thank you, Cliff.
Yes, sir.
Discuss open records, uh, officer resolution, Melissa?
This is housekeeping to update for the new staff in the police department. That's really it. Adding Nico instead of Jennifer.
Questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, discuss agreement with Paulding County and cost for the twenty twenty-five municipal election. Ms. Deidra?
Good evening. Thank you for having me here. Um, I sent you the intergovernmental agreement as well as the estimated cost. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer those for you.
I just want to say you guys do an amazing job.
Thank you.
So thank you to you and, and all your staff for what you guys do.
Thank you so much.
It did increase quite a bit.
We, um, actually, I'm going to speak before the, the Blue Ribbon Committee next Friday. I don't think it's very fair that municipalities have to have early voting for three weeks for such a low turnout. It costs a lot of money. Your biggest expense for this election is poll workers and we have to staff those locations. So hopefully they will hear us. I, I don't think it'll be for this election cycle, but hopefully they'll hear us and, you know, money's tight in all of our jurisdictions and, you know, property taxes are going up. We don't need to be wasting money like that.
Now, when you're saying the early voting, is it going to be at the Watson Center or will it be at our precincts?
We'll have it at your precinct and Watson as well.
So total five?
Three, there'll be two locations, one at Watson and one here.
Oh, okay.
And it'll be three weeks and two Saturdays.
And right now, just so you all know too, that's another, an additional expense is changing that polling location from the events place, um, to the camp building.
Yes.
She's got to send out new cards for that information.
We have to notify the voters of the, the precinct change.
But they've toured the bottom of the camp building and it is suitable, um, for the election.
Well, with those extra rooms there, that helps where you can put the machines in the rooms.
Yes.
Thank you, Deidra.
Thank you, Ms. Deidra.
Discuss GMA loans for renovations, equipment and furniture, Jody?
This item was placed on the agenda anticipating that we would have costs to share with the council. Unfortunately, that has not taken place.
Unfortunately, that has not taken place. I'm told that some of the costs will start coming in this week, hopefully, and we will readdress that with the council once I have those. I'll send them out to you so that you have time to consider it, and then we'll determine how we want to move forward.
Thank you, Judy. Okay, discuss sponsorship for Gia Smith. I got an email from Gia Smith's mother, who's Ms. Hyrum, and she's going to a national event. She's looking for some sponsorship money. Any thoughts?
Did she indicate how much money?
She gave us from fifty to a thousand.
I'm thinking maybe 500.
Is that it?
No.
Okay.
Five dollars, 500 is fine.
I should have turned it.
What do you agree on, 500?
Yes, and that would come out of the...
Sponsorships.
Sponsorships.
I'm sorry, I just didn't know. 500.
Okay.
Okay, discuss signs for mission and vision statements in the municipal annex. Melissa?
You have the quotes in your packet. The signed gentleman came out, or the signed contractor came out, council member, Mayor Protem Debbie was here as well. He checked out the walls. The consensus was that wall and that wall, so the mission on one side, the vision on the other. And then the options in your packet are the quote for an acrylic sign that is raised off the wall with the lettering on it or directly on the wall with the vinyl letters.
Go ahead, Melissa.
With the uncertainty of where our governmental complex is going to be housed, will these features that we're investing in, this, this cost, will we be able to take it to whatever building we move our?
The acrylic, yes.
The acrylic.
Not the vinyl letters attached to the wall, no.
I, I don't think we should get anything permanent, not knowing where we're going to house all of our staff permanently.
This is...
Well, this is for this building, not staff. It's for the annex.
Oh, because there's so many ideas that we're, okay.
This is so that the citizens can actually come in and read our mission and vision as to where we're having our meetings. And chances are, we'll still be having our meetings here for quite a few years.
Okay. Well, if that's the case, here's, I just, there's so many changes in where the, our chamber's going to be, where we're going to house our staff, and I just don't know.
I didn't know, I didn't know that they had ever spoken about changing our location that we have for our meetings.
I thought we had discussion, no, I thought we did.
Judy?
Nothing has been finalized.
Okay, nothing has been finalized, okay.
I firmly agree, we need to go with, if we do change locations in the future, that we can move those two items to the new facility.
Yes.
Discuss requirements for the use of city facilities by council or nonprofits.
Thank you, Mayor. So there is no, nothing that speaks to the procedure or practice of utilizing, well, not for nonprofits, we already have something established policy for nonprofits. However, for city officials that want to do something charitable on behalf of our citizens, there's nothing that speaks to that in our ordinance, in our charter. So I drafted something that may help us, and this comes from a learning experience. I wanted to have a backpack, school, back-to-school giveaway for our citizens. Eighty-four percent of our students are classified as economically disadvantaged. I, the buildings were available, the date that I wanted to, was secured for the, for the, well, one of the buildings were unavailable, so I didn't mind changing to the venue to a place I could host. However, I don't know what the process is. Does it have to be unique, is what I was told, I need to make mine more unique for next year, assuming I would be here next year. However, I wanted to do something, so I want to know for the future and for the council that remain, what is the procedure? So I drafted something, if it doesn't cost the city, and in my event that I was going to launch for our citizens, what's going to be at a cost of zero dollars for our city. I was going to have my volunteers, I've already had sponsors laid out from business partners in the community. I didn't need any, I didn't think I need policing because it was a giveaway, normally those are great events. However, every hurdle that I was able to get through was something else, so I just want to make sure we have something in writing that we can adopt, that we all can understand what the process and the procedures. So I just drew up something.
Did you give this to Jason to look over?
Nope, I'm giving it to you guys to see if you guys like it first before I present it to Jason. So is there, so is, what is the procedure at this time before this gets voted down or voted for? Like what, what is it? If I want to have a backpack program, or if I want to do a food giveaway, if I want to do anything, have a health fair, what is procedure at this time?
So I can represent the city?
I would represent the city.
That's a city event?
It would be a city event.
Okay. So if it's a city event, what are the guidelines? It doesn't cost the city anything.
But you'll still have to come in front of the council if you're going to represent the city.
Is that in writing?
That's just, but you can't represent the city without...
Council approval.
Well, we don't have anything to say if it's council approval needed because there's nothing in writing, so we're establishing policy now.
I, I have a suggestion. If you want it to be a city event, then it needs to go in with like red, white and boom and the Christmas stuff, that's a city event.
But that's because it costs the city money. It, it's something, so I want to create policy to provide some value or some, an event, a charitable event, it would cost the city zero dollars, so it's a different breed of animals, it's different. It's not costing the city, I don't need police, I don't need staff, I don't need volunteers, I don't need anybody to open up. So this provides some ideas of how we can go about it, write a letter, if you read through it, it would not, I'm not doing it without just jumping in. Hey, council, mayor, this is what my thoughts are, this is what I plan on doing. I go through the city manager, and the city manager tells me if the building is available, I would take responsibility, sign off on whatever paperwork. We're establishing policy because there's none in our charter to, to speak to this.
Okay, so I'm, when you wanted the event and say you wanted to have it here, like Chief had said, you have to have some type of, you called it crowd control, but it, it's actually like for the parking and how the traffic would flow. That means maybe overtime for some, or am I wrong?
No, it would be, it would require overtime.
What would not require having officers here?
If you're going to, I'm sorry.
The problem we're going to run into is scope of the event. Okay, if you're going to have an event that's going to draw a crowd, it would be in the best interest of the city to have off-duty officers here for security and for parking control and for traffic control and for any other issues that may pop up. Because again, we accept the liability, if we attract a crowd and we don't provide that security for the crowd, then the city is responsible. So in any event, you always have to plan for the fact that there's probably going to have to be a security component.
Okay. Okay, well, I was thinking, because of the, the proximity of the church and all of our city-owned property, we're within a mile of our police station, so if there was something that needed to, if there was anything that went, went wrong on giving away backpacks and free haircuts and free pedicures, I would easily call 911. So I wanted to save the city money and wanted to do something charitable at the same time.
And I understand that, but you also have to understand, we have a call volume that we still have to answer. For example, today we had a very serious call that took almost all of the police department's resources for about two and a half, almost three hours. We are currently also handling calls for the county on this side of the city because they don't have people available to answer certain calls as part of our mutual aid agreement with the county. So that, that's not a plan, that's a hope, and hope is not a plan when we talk about security. So we have to look at the fact that we need to have dedicated security that would be here if you're going to ask a crowd to be here. Because again, if something goes wrong and it only takes two or three people for something to go desperately wrong, then the city holds the liability of not having security at, at an event to make sure that people are safe.
Better safe than sorry, I understand. Thank you, Chief.
One of my questions was, and I asked you about it, you're saying it's going to be a city event, that you're going to go out and get sponsorships. So if you're going to get a sponsorship and say you go to a business that always gives to our other quote "city events," you're going, that check is going to have to go through the city, am I correct? Or they can't make it out to you. So how would that work?
Well, that wasn't my, that wasn't what I was doing. I was actually getting backpacks from Walmart and, and food and refreshments, so I was actually getting kind donations, not monetary, but that's a good question.
Yes.
One of the things that comes to mind as I, as I listen to the idea in, in, in council member Byardell, you and I obviously, we've not, we've not spoken about the idea, but listening to what y'all are saying, I think that you have two categories of events. You have city-sponsored events that operate under these policies, and then you have non-city events, the nonprofits, that have to comply with these rules and policies. I would be very leery of having any sort of third category of council member-sponsored events with different criteria. Because when you create something like that, you're inevitably going to be approached by folks wanting to have a council member-sponsored event because these different rules and policies apply. And in some of those situations, you're probably going to want to turn down that requesting entity because of various reasons. Most obvious, you may not agree with whatever cause they believe in. And when you accept some and turn down others, you run into some legal trouble under the equal protection clause, because you can't draw those distinctions without, that's why I think there probably needs to be just, at least just two categories, city-sponsored events and then nonprofit events. And if some of the nonprofit events, I don't, I'm just thinking out loud, you know are not going to be personnel-intensive, then maybe they can operate under a different set of guidelines, but you know, that's really up for the chief's input and the staff's input as to what those demands are going to be.
Why couldn't we just make it another city event?
I agree. I think we should add it as a city, I've been pushing for another city event. I like that idea, Doris.
I mean, that eliminates a lot of problems. It could be a back-to-school city event.
I love it.
Okay, we can bring that up.
Can we have some drafted policy for that, that we can look over?
We could just add it to our city events, correct?
You don't have to reinvent the wheel.
Okay, so how do we, how do we get that?
We'll discuss.
You all voted on those events in, I think it was February or March.
Yeah.
You voted on the dates, locations, time.
That sounds good.
So in my mind, it'd be on that, that list, and of course part of budget if there's any budgetary.
If we know it's coming, then we'll also have it programmed into the budget.
That sounds good.
Even if it's assumed that there will be no cost to the city, we will still have discretionary funds assigned to it so that it covers unforeseen.
Makes it a lot easier.
I would also point out, there is a big difference too between having an invitation-only event where you know who's coming, so it's a known quantity, to having a public, open to the public event where you're assuming all the best detentions will be flowing your way, but you can't guarantee that.
Right.
And that is the concern, that we, we always look at that side of it, even though it's hard to do.
Sounds good.
Okay. Number fifteen, discuss town hall meetings.
So I requested to add this to the agenda. There is nothing that speaks to town hall meetings in our charter with the exception of signage. What is the procedure? This is my first town hall meeting that I'm going to participate in along with Tiffany Carroll, councilwoman. Carol, what are the procedures? One required, may have required, that triggered the need for a police officer and one did not. What is the standard procedure for hosting a town hall?
I think when it comes to town hall meetings, the subject matter matters as to what you think you're going to draw to that town hall. If it's open discussions regarding budget or open discussions regarding, as in previous case, you know, we're taking input to understand what the community would like to see versus having a more controversial topic that may generate negative interests. I think that that's the guiding principle, that is the guiding principle that I would use to determine whether you're going to need a law enforcement presence there just to maintain decorum. But aside from that, there is no written policy, and we do try to support the council when they're wanting to do these initiatives, although this is still relatively new. Not, I've been here for almost 20 years, and I can count on one hand the number of town hall meetings we have had. We've had them, but they're not frequent.
And I'd like to change that. I think we need to increase our town hall meetings so we can have our citizens more engaged, involved, informed, and I think we need to have policy that speaks to that or, or something that we know we can just refer to for those who are new to the council, those who are going to join the council, it's a legend, somebody may come in, a new person. I think for the future, we should have something that directs, some guidelines.
Could you write something up and we'll submit it to Jason?
No, Jason, you can write it up. You're better at it.
Well, you know, it all, it all depends on what y'all want. Let me say two things. Under state law, state law requirements for meetings, when I hear the phrase "town hall meeting," the first thing that I ask anybody wanting to do that is, is, is there going to be a quorum of the governing authority there? Because if a quorum is present, undoubtedly you will be talking about city business because why else have a town hall meeting? And if a quorum is present, then you have to comply with the requirements of the Georgia Open Meetings Act. Those requirements in a nutshell are notice, published notice, you've got to have an agenda in advance, you have to have signage in advance, you have to have minutes of the town hall meeting, and then obviously the town hall meeting, the minutes would need to be approved at a later date. That's fine if you know that that's what you're getting into in advance. If you are not going to have a quorum there, then the Open Meetings Act does not apply, and you've got a little bit more freedom to not worry about the formalities of the town hall meeting itself. Now, in a town hall meeting, there's a variety of formats. There, some are more peaceful than others, some are more efficient than others. I've seen town hall meetings go very smoothly, and I've seen town hall meetings become a finger-pointing battle back and forth as to who's right and who's wrong. So there's, there's some techniques to do them, but there's nothing under state law other than open meetings compliance that says how you must do them. And it's also nice to have the freedom and liberty to, to do with those what you want. Sometimes they can be a Q and A session. Sometimes it may be that you just want to talk about X, and there's not a time for the public to, to really interact, they're just receiving a message. On the flip side, maybe there's a topic out there and all you want to do is you want to hear what the public thinks about a particular topic. And then there's other versions where you have a Q and A back and forth, and there's techniques as to how to make that more successful than others. But it's, it's a variety, and I'd be happy to give you my thoughts on any one of them individually, depending upon how you want to do it.
Well, I'm, I really wish we would have went more in depth than just two council members, because it sure would be nice to be able to hear what citizens have to say in this upcoming town hall meeting, since the rest of this panel has to vote on it.
Oh, this is, so the reason why I, because of the quorum, because of the cost to the city, so I was trying to take a cost-free approach to having this, but I do know now we definitely will need policing. However, when I wanted to do the toy drive, it was, oh, it's a burden on the city, it's going to cost factor, you're putting, you're putting stress on our staff, a strain on our staff. So I took that, I processed that, and I tried to alleviate that with my toy drive, which I was... which I was spearheading wholeheartedly, independently, but, you know, with the exception if you wanted to support. So moving forward, there are two developments coming up, and I said, Doris, would you like to take on Blue River? You still have the opportunity to have that, and I also, for, as far as the concern that you have is absolutely valid, you'd like to know what the voices, the concerns are, the pros, the cons of our citizens, where do they stand on these developments? That's going to be hopefully live streamed. I reached out to the Director of Communications of Polton County, I reached out to Richard Grant, the Dallas New Era journalist. So that, even if they cannot commit, I will have it recorded. So everybody will be informed of what the citizens feel, and at the same time, you are absolutely able to have a town hall for the Blue development with any of the members that are able to attend.
Okay.
Discuss employees' retirement system with Georgia resolution.
They're going to do the massage, Parlo. They're going to do the massage.
We already did. It's already been done, we moved it.
That was the public participation.
That was the public participation, we moved it.
Yes, but that's.
The agenda item remains next.
What else do you want, we've already discussed.
But, like you told you, you still have to do something since it's on the agenda.
Discuss massage establishment ordinance, that's already been discussed.
There was some discussion during public participation on agenda items, but now it's the new business item. There may be additional discussion, there may not be. I would just call to see if there is.
I respectfully request a revision to Article seven, massage establishment, specifically Section twelve dash four sixteen dash exemptions A and E to explicitly include licensed mental health professionals under the list of exempted providers. We have a huge population of citizens that are suffering from mental health-related problems, and I think we should do the most that we can. If this is hindering this particular clinic, medical clinic, to provide services to our citizens, I think we need to consider revising it so they can, they can provide those well-needed services for our citizens.
Jason, how long would that take if it got revised?
I don't think it's as simple as just adding an additional exception. There's Georgia state law that comes into play on this. Under state law, the speaker that spoke earlier today, she is a licensed clinical social worker. State law defines what social work is. When I review the definition of what the General Assembly has said social work is, I do not see the touching of individuals expressly authorized because you're a licensed clinical social worker, nor do I see it in what is called the definite, what they define as psychotherapeutic techniques. Now, there is some overlap in other areas, but state law requires massage therapists to have a massage therapy license. A lot of our regulations at the city level, we regulate those people that are going to be engaged in massage therapy businesses with a lot of regulations. I would be certainly willing to explore what additional leeway the city may want to consider offering, but I will say this, just saying that there are state standards, I need to know what those standards are. There are many exceptions under state law as to what is not massage therapy, or what is allowed even though there is touching. For instance, the speaker indicated, I think the reference was to cosmetologists. Specifically under state law, there's an exception for cosmetologists. There's an exception for many things, but I do not see under state law a boilerplate exception for mental health professionals. Because the mental health profession has a variety of disciplines within it. Some of that could be, you know, psychiatry, psychology, licensed clinical social, it's a broad umbrella, and I want to make sure that the city knows what kind of exception that it's thinking about carving out, and whether that's really a good idea under the ordinance. It's certainly something I'm willing to look at, but I don't know, I'm certainly not prepared to know where to take an exception under the ordinance, given what I've heard tonight.
I want to be really clear, I'm not trying to touch anyone. I want to provide the supervision to a licensed massage therapist who is licensed in the state of Georgia. Right now, I am the owner of the business. Because of the way the ordinance is written, I can't do my therapy if I get a spa establishment. I don't want to be the one who touches, I want to be the one who provides supervision on trauma and form protocols for them to do their work in a way that's safe for my clients. So I'm not asking to touch people, because that is out of scope of my work, but what I am asking is to be, to be able to hire people who are acupuncturists, who are massage therapists, to have, be under the umbrella of mental health trauma-informed services to be part of that body-based services. Right now, the way the ordinance is written, I can't, if the massage therapist is not there, I can't do my business, I can't, and if the massage therapist doesn't even matter, I can't even have clients there who are sixteen, seventeen, or eighteen without their parents because this is a healthcare facility, not a massage parlor. And so what I want the city council members to do is allow me to do my business and hire the people who are licensed to do the work under the guise of my mental health guidance.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'll say that in response to that. Again, there are certain exceptions under state law for medical professionals. But I, you know, again, what I want to make sure the city doesn't do is create a blanket exception for any mental health professional to have a massage parlor when maybe the intentions by one individual are holistic and good, but we don't want to allow those intentions to be abused by others who have no business in this industry. And it just needs to be explored further. It's not in a position right now to create an exception.
Well, I understand, and I think we'd be messing with state law if we did some exemption, so I think it does need further exploration.
So will we table that till August twenty-sixth? When would that be table, like, do we table this, or do we just wait on you?
Again, I think that y'all need to discuss it more, we need to explore more. I don't think we're in a position to just draft an exception to it. We got to make, you know, and another thing I want to talk with the citizen and make sure that she understands what she's asking the city to do, and is there an alternative way that she can accomplish what she's after without creating an exception under the city ordinance?
I think that's a conversation between the attorney and the young lady that came up and spoke to make sure, you were saying, we get the right thing, the right language. Lawyers like to use a certain thing to keep us under control. I think that's, I think that's the best way to do that.
Discuss employees' retirement system with Georgia resolution, Kathy.
Good evening again. This resolution is one of the multiple steps in, that we have to put in place for us to be able to have the vote for the referendum regarding the social security and the retirement that we have increased to. So based off of this, currently, we are scheduled, once this is done, I've been under the understanding that it's already gone to the governor's office, so security has signed off on it. We put this resolution in place, which is basically your permission to allow us to have the vote that is currently scheduled for September twenty-third and twenty-fourth. Once we get past this step, we'll start having educational classes in August, making the employees aware of what is taking place and why there is a vote of all eligible full-time employees. And then, once the vote takes place, whether the majority is to do without or do to do, continue with, it will, whatever that choice is, it will be effective October first. Any questions?
Ball's in your court.
In y'all's right now.
Thank you, Kathy. Consent agenda?
Yes, sir. The employee handbook updates and changes. Because it's so large, I was thinking new business. Is that more appropriate?
Yeah.
Okay. The supplemental insurance changes, I would say consent. Item number six, I have as consent. Item number seven, consent. Item number eight, consent. Item number nine, consent. Item number ten, consent. Item number eleven, no action right now, go to next work session. Item number twelve, consent at five hundred dollars from the elected official's sponsorship budget. Item number thirteen, consent, and you all want the acrylic option because they're mobile. Item number fourteen, no action. Item number fifteen, no action. Item number sixteen, potentially the next work session. I'll wait for Jason to let me know. Item number seventeen, consent.
Any questions?
No.
Okay, the August fifth will be the next regular session, six P M. right here. We will be going into an executive session, and we will be adjourning from the executive session. May I have a motion to move to executive session?
I'll make a motion to enter executive session to discuss property and personnel.
I'll second. All in favor? opposed? Thank you.